Good evening, this is a special select board meeting, so calling to order. We're at Nessickus Regional Middle School Auditorium. It's 6:00 PM, December 3rd, 2018. And all those who are able and who wish to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brittany, can we have the roll call, please?
John Boyer.
Ed Pollard.
Here.
Mark Strauss.
Here.
Bob Bishop.
Here.
John Patel.
Here.
Here.
Okay, we're not, we're skipping, as you can see, the public address to the board. Actually, the only people that are here are those that are part of what we're going to be talking about tonight. These are public hearing, notice of a public hearing for petitions number 559, Daniel Patel, 33 Daly Avenue, and petition 560, Nadine Heiser, 168 Hensill Road. Both parties are present, and I'm going to allow them, if they wish, to say anything to the board at any point in time. All I ask is that you identify yourself when you do stand and when you do speak the first time. You don't have to do it every time, so that we know who you are, and so does our viewing audience. So, the first petition is number 559, which is Daniel Patel, 33 Daly Avenue. And I'll just read quickly the letter that we received. "To whom it may concern, pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 11, you are hereby notified that an application has been made to Board of Appeals for a special permit under Section 350-22, Chapter 5," or C5, I should say, "of the Dalton zoning bylaws to operate an automotive repair business. A copy of the application is enclosed for your review. Please inform the Board of Appeals in writing of any concerns or comments you may have regarding this application. Note that you are required to send a copy of your comments to the applicant as well, per MGL Chapter 40, Section 11." Your response must be received by the Board of Appeals prior to the public hearing, which is scheduled for Tuesday, December 4th, 7:30 PM, in the Callahan Room. So there's going to be another hearing on this tomorrow at 7:30 PM in Town Hall in the Callahan Room. As was said, this is an application to have a automotive repair service at 33 Daly Avenue, which is the old Brown Oil/CSGO Heating or Heating and Plumbing. And I guess Marabato, at one point in time, was also operating out of there. And as is stated, and I believe this was written by Mr. Patel, as for the use of the property, we have a note, Mr. Patel. And I'll read that into the record as well. "The building will be rented for the purpose of an automotive repair of cars and trucks under the name of Patel's Garage. We will be utilizing all five of the bays, with parking being six spots off to the right side of the building at 10 foot by 20 foot. There will be three employees with work hours of 8:00 AM to 7:30 PM. On the forward face of the building is one outdoor light center of the building, a business sign with the dimensions of four foot by eight inches, attached to the building also. Noise from the building would consist of cars and trucks being ran and driven to the garage and the use of the air tools at times." And there's a diagram which kind of shows us where things are going to be. There's also some information that we received from the chief, Fire Chief, with regard to underground storage tanks on the property. And I'll read his letter, which I believe was sent to you, Mr. Patel, or you, Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Okay. It says, "To whom it may concern, be it known that the DEP currently has open files on the property of 33 Daly Avenue in regards to its underground tanks. Currently, the property contains two 30,000 gallon underground storage tanks that were used for fuel. The tanks are single wall or out of compliance with DEP and UST standards. I have attached a letter from the Department of Environmental Protection regarding single wall tanks. I've also attached the compliance form from DEP, January 2018, which clearly states the disapproval of the tank. I would like you to be aware of this, as it will at some point affect the operation of the proposed business." So Chief Kehanlon's letter was more of a heads up?
Yes.
To you and the property owner as for what is there and what has been demanded. And the Department of Environmental Protection, we also have a copy of that letter that was sent to the Fire Chief with regard of what has to be done with the removal of the tanks. And I'm not sure if the property owner, Mr. Swindlerst? Mr. Swindlerst, if you receive a copy of that...
That's my, I mean, I'm aware, my name is Chris Swindlerst, and I own the property of 33 Daly Avenue. I'm aware of the fact that the tanks have to be removed. Just a correction there, there's not two 30,000 gallon, there's actually four, two twenties and two tens, which add up to the same amount. As of August 17th, 2017, all single wall tanks in the state of Massachusetts have to be out of service. And at this point, they're completely empty, they've been rendered inoperable, so they can't be filled, they can't, there's no pumping there any longer, can't be pumped out of. And it's simply a financial matter of digging them up, and so, it's, we don't have the cash to do that at the moment. So that's why we're hoping to get them to Mr. Patel and get some cash flow going, and we'll take care of it. Also in the process of selling another property elsewhere, so hopefully that'll free up the money to do that. It's probably $50,000 to $60,000 to dig up these tanks and then backfill them. The property should be clean, it was always electronically monitored, the tanks were electronically monitored for leakage. And when I bought the property in 2001, there was a 21E, which is the DEP's form that says the property is clean. So they, you know, test wells were drilled, tested, and there were a few problems that were remediated at that time, but, and then they retested again, I think, in 2005 or '06. So we don't expect there to be any major problems there.
So you haven't removed the tanks, obviously, but according to this DEP letter, they have to be closed? And I'm not 100% sure what the definition of closed is. They have to be done by July 1st, 2018?
They are closed, so they're rendered, they can't be filled, so they've been pump dry, the fills are locked, there's no pumping anymore. So they are technically closed, but they're not removed yet.
Did you have to send any documentation to the DEP that you did this?
We did, and I did that with Marabato, and I'm sorry to remember the details, but that was, Marabato stopped operating in September or October of 2017. They went past that date that I mentioned, August 17th, but with the DEP's knowledge that they were still there. They were building a new facility in Pittsfield, and they were waiting for that to become operational, so. But I don't remember what the, Marabato sent the documentation that the tanks were closed at that time, and I don't remember the details of that, I apologize.
There was a business in there, West?
West Branch Equipment was a business that actually belonged to me as well. I had hired a mechanic to do equipment repair, chainsaws, small engines, and unfortunately, he quit to take another job, and I could no longer, you know, I'm not qualified myself to run that kind of business, so.
So it's no longer in operation, it's...
Correct, yeah, that's correct. The same penalty, so it's interesting, the planning, the zoning bylaws say you can run a small engine equipment repair business by right, you don't need a special permit. But in order to repair automobiles and trucks, you do need a special permit. So it's kind of a fine line there between the two. Very similar operation, but one requires a permit, the other does not, so.
Mr. Patel, before I open this up to the rest of the board, is there anything you'd like to add at this point in time?
No, I think you covered pretty much what it is, because I do all know about the tanks and everything.
Just identify yourself, though.
My name is Daniel Patel. Yeah, I do know about the tanks, and I know the underground, which I knew that when I started talking to him, I know he's got to take them out and everything, which we're hoping to still be able to get in the building, do something, and get things moving. And like you said, he's going to get them out, but he's just cash flow problems. So we were hoping that by me writing that start of business and everything, that he could get things moving and get money moving, so we could do this and get everything straightened out.
Thank you. I'll wrap the rest of the board, questions or comments?
Mr. Patel, you're not going to even go near those tanks, right? You have no idea to use them, tanks or anything, it's not going to affect your repair business much?
No, we strictly, just strictly the garage and tanks, but nothing to do with us. We're not using them, we're not doing nothing. The only effect is what, the thing that could affect things, when they dig them up, it'll be, it's between the two buildings, and we're going to have to just delay business for a few days, whenever, if we get going, while they remove all the stuff and fill it. But it's going to have nothing to do with us. We're strictly the garage, strictly for garage business, and that's it.
So when you say between the two buildings, you mean the office and the garage?
Yes.
Yeah, they're kind of dead center between the two.
Yeah.
And there's a barn on the property that we've already rented for storage to a contractor, so we're renting the individual buildings to, you know, utilize the property again. No, it's not a oil company.
The office up front, is that being used or anything at this point?
It's not right now. I have a couple of young fellows want to rent it and turn it into a, they haven't really given me the details, but they want to rent it as an office and run an advertising business or something out of it, so. We're meeting with the building inspector Wednesday morning at 8:30 to just discuss their plans as far as how they want to build it out and so forth, so be completely separate from that.
Is there a deadline by the DEP to have the tanks put out? I understand they're being closed, but did you just close and leave them closed indefinitely?
No, they should have been out of the ground by their schedule, it should have been done by now. They know, you know, they can't get blood from a stone, as it were, so, you know, they have not started imposing any fines right now, so. I don't remember what the, I think it was within the first year after they were ceased operation.
Do they have to be removed, or can they be filled?
They have to be removed, unfortunately, yeah. And that's true of, the only time they allow you to fill an underground tank, be it a small 100 gallon tank at a homeowner's, or 500 gallon tank at a home, or these 20,000 gallons, the only time they allow you to fill them is if removing them would endanger a building, endanger, you know, under a foundation, or somebody built an addition. But if there's no danger to any buildings, you have to take them out of the ground. And when they're out of the ground during that process, then someone like Maximilian comes in and does soil testing in the hole, and make sure that no spill has taken place, and, you know, if there was a spill, then that has to be remediated as part of the whole thing, so.
So you're aware of everything, and the actual business end of this doesn't really hinge upon those tanks at all, from what I can gather. At some point in time, it may affect the business if you're doing it while Mr. Patel is still operating out of there.
Yeah, you know, the tanks are in front of his doors, so during that period, be it a week or whatever, while we're digging them up and filling the hole, he'll, we'll, we'll do everything we can to mitigate the inconvenience, but there will be some inconvenience to him.
And there's no immediate plan as for when that's going to be done?
No. At this point, I mean, winter's coming, the ground will be frozen soon, it'll be spring, April, May, if there is.
Mr. Patel, when do you want to get open? When are you planning to open?
Yesterday. If I end up being the first year, the time when everything gets done, I mean, there's a lot of stuff to do still, set up times and everything. Once we get everything resolved, it takes time.
Personally, I don't see where, I don't have any issue with this business opening up. Everyone's aware of what's going on.
Yeah.
It seems to be similar to what is going on with Dalton Mole, because they've been struggling with removing those tanks and not removing the tanks, they haven't been used. I don't know if it's exactly the same, but it seems to be similar.
If I may, his tanks are in fact in compliance, they're double wall tanks.
Okay.
But regardless of the fact that they're double wall, I think the law reads that whenever you cease using a tank, you're supposed to remove them within six months or a year or something like that, even if they're perfectly good tanks.
Okay.
So it's similar, but not quite.
Thank you for the clarification. Well, I'd...
I agree with John, I don't see why we can't be in favor of this business opening up under the circumstances.
Any other differing opinions?
I'll agree with that, but just contingent, I mean, or no, they're saying, obviously, we'll have to take everything ready as soon as possible, but that's obviously based on cash flow and, you know, whatever.
John, you had some input from neighbors and whatever.
Yeah, the neighbors were really concerned about this issue with the tanks down there, and they contacted me, why I don't know, you know, just because I was available. But they are concerned about the removal of the tanks, and they realize the deadline has already gone by to remove them, and yet we hear no firm date or commitment to remove them by. And let me clarify why we're here this evening. We're here to respond to a letter from the Board of Appeals, offering our opinion about what should transpire Tuesday night, tomorrow night. Now, just to be clear, Mr. Swindlerst, this board is, whatever they say tonight, is just strictly their opinion, it has no validity. The board that will make the decision tomorrow is the authority. They may, very well, it may breeze through, they may attach conditions, they may reject it, I don't know.
I understand.
But, I mean, I think this board should be obligated, as a select board in the town of Dalton, to have some concerns over this issue down there. And stress to the zoning Board of Appeals, that we do have concerns over the issue regarding the tanks dead set in the middle of town, four of them. This is not something to just brush aside and say, well, we think something might happen, and suggest that this factor be recognized, and set a timeline as a condition.
Well, I don't think we're brushing it aside, I mean, yeah, we, that's why we're here, to give our opinion, as you said.
Yep.
And if, I don't know that we in particular can say, all right, this would be the deadline, but we, I think we should stress to the board that a deadline should be placed.
That's what I just said, a condition, stating a time and date by which they'd be removed.
Okay.
And nobody's here to stand in the way of this business or operating. We implore businesses to locate and operate Dalton. We'd be happy to have you, Mr. Patel.
I understand.
Are you related to Ray?
My father.
Hey, known for years up in Hensill.
Yes.
I don't differ with you, John, but I just think this board should, in our recommendation, say, this is, we have serious concerns, and I think the board is, the zoning Board of Appeals is obligated to establish a firm deadline for this activity to be completed.
I agree.
Perhaps we could get reports like every two months or three months about when you think that tanks might be reasonably removed, so it just, we don't hear anything, we don't know what's going on.
Right.
So if we could make some sort of maybe suggestion that we get an update at least every, in three months?
Yeah. We could...
Realistically, I wouldn't be able to do anything until the ground thawed again.
Right, okay.
So I have every intention of doing it during next construction season, which, you know, spring, summertime.
Okay, well, maybe when that season begins, you could give us an update, we could have that as a suggestion.
Or we could ask the building inspector to...
Oh, that's, yes.
To update us every, once a month or...
Well, again, in the winter, we wouldn't expect to change, but...
With the removal of the tanks, does it have to be coordinated through our building inspector, any of that?
The fire chief will have to be involved.
To the fire chief.
Yes.
So if we can get the updates through that person, would be the fire chief, and let us know what's going on, that would be helpful.
But if there's further delay, we'd like to know that, if you, you know, tell us, in May, you know, you don't see that, you can do it.
Okay.
We'd like to know that.
Yeah. We don't want to get into the thing like the guy putting the sewer system up the trailer park, it'll be done in October. Yeah, three years on it.
Yeah, yes.
Well, I will entertain a motion as, I mean, I agree that what you said, John, as for, okay, we don't want, we agree with the business going in there, but we would like to have a timeline set for the removal of the tanks and updates, frequent updates from the fire chief.
Yep. We suggest, we have serious concerns over this issue, and we suggest to the Board of Appeals that they issue the permit, but with a condition that a firm timeline be set for the removal.
Okay. You got that?
Want that in a formal motion?
Yes.
So moved.
So moved, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to send that in correspondence to the Board of Appeals for the meeting tomorrow. You understand what we just said?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any questions or concerns or anything else, comments, before we vote on this?
No, I think that he's going to take care of the tank situation as soon as he possibly can.
Okay.
I know he absolutely has to, he cannot keep going.
He can't ignore it forever.
You'll have trouble with it eventually with the DEP.
Yeah.
Yes.
When they start finding you, it's not...
Yeah, we know all about that, we had a couple of pieces ourselves.
You'll get a copy of our correspondence, I would imagine it would be in our office, we're not going to mail it to you, obviously, because you won't get it for tomorrow night's meeting. But essentially, it's going to be what we just talked about, so you understand what we're going to say. And if you want to pick up a copy of it prior to your meeting, by the end of business tomorrow, that would be great, if you could do that, if that's okay with you.
Sure. And you're there till 5:00 tomorrow? Or somebody's there till 5:00?
Yes, till 5:00. Till 5:00.
John, we'll be able to transmit our written opinion to the board by tomorrow night, evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Our input?
Hi.
Hi.
Mark Purges, 36, Glendale Ave.
Yes, sir.
So I'm a neighbor, acting on the other side of the fence is this property.
Yes.
So I'm just interested in, I know you mentioned hours of operation to up to 7:30 PM, and, you know, auto mechanic and pneumatics, and so I have young kids, I just don't know if, you know, how noisy it'll be up until that hour, is it going to be weekend hours? And then is there any plans to do any modifications to like the perimeter, the fence line, things like that, so just concerns and worries that I have is, you know...
That would, I would, that would end up being a decision by the Board of Appeals, I would imagine, at the hearing? Would you be able to voice those concerns as well at that hearing tomorrow?
Sure.
Sure.
That way, they'll understand it. We could make mention that there are concerns of noise and hours of operation in our owner, those voices are being, but it would probably be stronger if it came from a resident, if you can attend tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
That would be great.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, did you fill a letter to the Board of Appeals about this hearing?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I think everybody within 400 feet, 400 foot radius gets a letter, and you would be on that, if you were on Glendale Ave, would be backed up to the property.
Yep.
Okay.
Just to clarify, did it say 7:00 or 7:30 tomorrow? I think it said 7:00, did you hear somebody say 7:30?
The letter says 7:30.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I'm watching it come at 7:30.
Yeah, 7:30, 7:30.
7:30, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And you said what room is that, Dan?
Callahan Room, where we usually meet with the select board. You go through the police department door, up the stairs, and it's right in front of you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Yes.
Abstentions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, we have petition number 560, Nadine Heiser, 168 Hensill Road, and Mrs. Heiser is here with us today, or this evening, I should say, as well, and we appreciate any type of input you may have. You said your attorney might be coming, do you...
Hi, spoken to, he's not.
Okay.
So, John, he's got notice of...
Oh, could you identify yourself?
I own the property at 1, well, the corporation owns the property at 164, 168 Hensill Road in Dalton.
Okay. Let me read this, and then I'll let you explain. As I said, this is petition number 560, and I'll read the letter from the town planner, Board of Appeals. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 11, you are hereby notified that an application has been made to the Board of Appeals for an administrative appeal, Section 350, 118A, of the Dalton Building Commissioner's violation of a second dwelling unit at 168 Hensill Road. A copy of the application is enclosed for your review. Please inform the Board of Appeals in writing of any concerns or comments you may have regarding this application. Note that you are required to send a copy of your comments to the applicant as well, per MGL Chapter 40A, Section 11. Your response must be received by the Board of Appeals prior to the public hearing, which is, well, was scheduled for Tuesday, December 4th, at 7:30 PM, it's been postponed until January?
It's my understanding that you don't have a forum tomorrow to handle this particular matter.
Oh, okay, okay. But you're still going to, it's still going to come up at the meeting? I would imagine, then they may continue it or not?
I believe, I'm not positive, but I was told that it was removed from your agenda, from the general, the last form.
And the, also in our packet is from the...
Excuse me, John?
Yes?
I didn't get any attachment.
I didn't get any either.
You didn't get the attachments?
No.
They should have been in your folder, I apologize, because they were being made. Decent.
Okay. Here's one extra copy full set. And I've got another extra copy full set. I have two.
I'm going to read a lot of it. And the first part of your packet is the application from the building inspector, or the building commissioner. And this application is submitted to appeal the decision of the building commissioner attached, and I would imagine that's the previous building commissioner, as I gather. The building commissioner erroneously issued an order prohibiting the premises owned by Shire Enterprises LLC from a use as of right. And I believe that use of the property is a two-family without special permit constitutes a violation of Dalton zoning ordinances. From what I could see, Mrs. Heiser said, right along, since at least, from the documents that we have in these packets, from at least 2015, you've been billed either, well, I have water bills in front of us, indicating that it's a two-family dwelling. And that's really about all that we have, are the water bills showing us that, and that the other dwell, the other building at 160... and that the other dwell, the other building at one sixty-four Hensdale Road has been billed as a single-family unit or a single unit.
Single unit.
Yeah. So, um, I'm gonna open it up to you for an explanation more than what we have here. You've owned that property for how long?
We bought it in two thousand and eight, so, and, uh, we, I got a phone call today about one o'clock this afternoon that this, this meeting was happening today, so that's when I reached out to the attorney. I'm not sure if I qualified to really answer zoning questions or whatever you might have for questions. Um, but I can tell you that we've owned it since two thousand and eight, and I know that this board has heard in the past when it was tra, when the, so it's a, it's a parcel that has two buildings on one lot, and if you recall, um, four or more years ago, we came in front of the zoning board a couple of times for outside seating. So it's not new that you guys are familiar with this property, it's been, it was a two-family and a candy store at that point. So I, I'm not really qualified to speak, I just wanted, I was here to see what, that, how it was presented to you guys and to see what, what you might have.
When you bought the property, it was, it was being used as a two-family?
We bought the property, it was foreclosure. So it was, um, we purchased it from the bank, and the first thing we did was, um, take the fact that it had, you know, two kitchens, and applied through the town of Dalton, through a, um, uh, I believe it was Pat Mickle, a licensed electrician, um, who pulled permits with EverSource to have the electric, made sure that it was all separate. So we have, we have that, you know, that it was done when we originally, um, bought it.
During, during the time since you've owned it, did you have to do anything with the building inspector as for permits, uh, with regard to having a two-family unit?
Not to make it one. Um, we've had some, you know, history with the building, let's just say, I mean, they've, the, the fire chief's been in and out, doing smoke certifications as a two-family, it's, I, I have history.
So this is, this is for, uh, okay, your zone is a B-one?
It is a business zone, and we're just contesting the commissioner's opinion or decision.
And as a B-one, you can't have a multi-dwelling unit?
Without, I believe, a special permit, yeah.
So with this hearing, will you be applying for a special permit?
That's a legal question that I don't know how to answer, because from what I understand, there's a process?
Yes.
So I don't, I don't know, really, I don't, I'm just here as a layman.
Okay. I'll open it up. One thing that you just spoke to, you asked her if she was applying for a special permit, but on the second page of his handout, it says they're applying for an administrative appeal.
Yeah, this administrative appeal, though, has, has been brought by the building commissioner.
So, I guess in my opinion, it sounds like a, a legal question before the board tomorrow night. I don't know how much input this board would have. She's got evidence that it was a two-family with the water bills.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't see any sewer bills in here, but we assume that they got a water bill, they got two sewer bills.
I would think so, yeah, but we don't have...
Two water bills, so if anything, it's, it sounds like oversight. And they'll be up for that tomorrow night with your lawyers to hash it out.
Did, did you say the fire chief inspected it as a two-family house?
A couple of times. We had a tenant issue, that's all I really want to say about the issue, but we had a tenant issue with a tenant in the back, um, so we had, you know, um, we had, did have him come out, you know, make sure that everything was, was...
So you asked the fire chief to go?
The, whoever does your smoking, smoking carbon...
Yes, the fire chief, okay, well, okay, dude.
Yeah. And they, they were there, they, we usually have that done every couple of years, so they were just there the other day as well. But previous to that, I want to say, it might've, I could look, it was like two thousand fourteen, they've been to the house multiple times.
Right, but they, they, they must have the understanding that it is two-family that would be doing that.
Oh, lots of, yeah, lots of people have that understood.
Thank you.
Nadine, is there other two-family houses near you?
Uh, there are, let's see, um, within that B-one zone, there's one on East Ustetonic Street, I sold it, so I'm very familiar with it. It's the one on the corner of East and Ustetonic, has the big three-car garage, that one's a two-family.
Is that in the B-one zone?
It is. I think all of these really, I mean, if you just want my opinion, I think they probably kind of evolved throughout the years, 'cause that one was clearly a single-family home at one point, the one I'm refer, referring to. I can't tell you if it had permits pulled on that one, I have no idea. Um, but in that neighborhood, yeah, it's literally, you could throw a stone and hit that one. I know, if you walk the neighborhood, you know it, it's the, um...
Well, it's diagonal from a BMW?
Yeah, yep.
Big gold, colonial, and now it's a, what, three-family?
It's a two-family, yeah.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not, my confusion is how we respond to this. I mean, if it's been that way for years, I don't understand why this issue has come up now.
Well, I think it says here somewhere that one of the assessors instigated this, that...
I didn't get that, though.
I don't know where I did it.
Yeah, it was in the second paragraph of the...
Oh, after being questioned by the assessor, you know, it's about the number of units allowed.
Yeah, I know, I saw some... John, we can just, you know, have no opinion. Our opinion is no opinion, it's a legal matter.
If there are other, other dwellings in that area that are more than single-family, then why isn't it allowed at this, this building?
Well, maybe because nobody ever...
There's probably no record of a special permit.
So if they draw a special permit, then it'll be okay. That might, yeah, be what the outcome would be, they tell them they have to get a special permit. There's also the place right across the street from you, it's a business and a couple, uh, dwelling combined.
Right, and I can form you...
That's a store. So there's ample precedent, I'm certain that's what the, I'm just guessing. This is what the board will say, you need a special permit here, go through the process, and, you know, it'll be well with the world. I don't think of any reason why it would be denied.
Okay. How do you, how do, how do you want to respond to this? Should we respond? We see no, we see no, uh, issue with, uh, the Heisers applying for a special permit on this? If that be the case?
Yeah, you better hedge your bets there, because we're not lawyers.
Well, I know we're not lawyers. Um, but it, but it said here that, or it seems like that a special permit was never issued for it to be a multi-family dwelling.
It seems to indicate that, uh, in nineteen, in twenty sixteen, that it was turned down for a special permit, isn't it? What, isn't that what one of these letters actually say?
Where are you reading from?
Okay, so the letter of October eighteenth from the town of Dalton.
Third and, third and...
It's from the building inspector. Maybe called it... Fourth page, yeah. You were informed of being...
A building permit? What was a building permit in sixteen?
What I recall is, we had an interim building commissioner, and the recommendation was that we make an application to bring it to what it already was, if that makes any sense. And then, I don't remember, something about, um, a drawing, which I think was or wasn't submitted, and then, I don't go on that site, so we didn't know that there was a follow-up after that. Um, so that's why currently, the position is to contest it, and then if it needs to go somewhere after that, then that's where it would need to go.
So that's what, so that's what your intent is at this, from this point?
I'm contesting, we're contesting it, that's...
You're contesting the twenty sixteen, is it?
Yeah. Or, yeah.
I, I'm surprised there wasn't more follow-up from twenty sixteen.
I didn't even, I didn't even get that, um, notification, I don't know, unless you log into that, um, portal of the town, you don't know if there's a message there for you. So the last, so I don't have the dates in front of me, but when that was put in there, the next time I logged in was like a year and a half later.
But it should've been sent to you directly.
You can see when you look at the portal.
You should've received a letter from the town of Dalton, correctly.
I didn't. No, I'm not. I also didn't get notice of this meeting, and so I walked out today, so I don't, I don't know.
One more question?
Go ahead.
Nadine, and this first water bill we come to, here, it says, there's a notation on it, it says, two thousand and fifteen, billed as a two-family. Who made that notation?
Probably me. I was doing the best I could to gather what I needed to gather in the short amount of time that I had.
Well, it is?
I think you have thirty days or something from the time you get the letter, so...
And obviously, you paid it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But beyond that, there's, there's more, I just had, I just didn't have it available for, for the, you know, eighteen, twelve days I had left when I finally realized I needed to do so.
What's the board's pleasure on this?
Any suggestions?
I think we refer back to the zoning board and have her, have her follow the proper procedure, 'cause the way I read this is, she applied for a building permit, and then, um, they're, basically, it was told you, it requires a special, a special permit. So it sounds like she, it was applied for a building permit, and what she needed was a special permit. I would, I, I would say we refer back and have it, have it followed properly, what she needs to do, and endorse it, just endorse her getting a special permit.
It's a motion, or...
Yeah, I'll put that in motion. I mean, she's, it's been a two-family for...
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, then, it's been motion. We have a second? We have a second?
I second it.
You second it? Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Mrs. Heiser? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. So tomorrow, you're gonna go to the hearing, but from what I understand, it's probably gonna get postponed.
I believe it's going to be tabled, um, the last time.
Okay, okay.
Will this letter be, will a letter from you be available?
Uh, probably not for tomorrow, uh, because...
So like, do you want to tell, um, how this ended today?
Well, we still have to, we still have to submit it to them.
Right. We'll go to the zoning board with a copy to use.
So she can pick it up by the end of business?
Tomorrow? Probably not.
Okay, so we're not gonna submit it to the zoning board until they actually have the hearing?
Because my understanding is they have postponed, they're not gonna hear this tomorrow.
Okay.
If I find out differently, there will be a letter.
We'll let you know.
Tell me what you're supposed to tell me, actually, that's all I want to ask.
I just... Well, as our motion was, it said we were referring you back to the zoning board of appeals with the, um, consensus that we approve of the special permit being issued. Okay? That, in essence, is what's gonna be in the letter.
All right.
Would you have them apply for a special permit? Yeah. Is that correct? Right.
Okay.
I think the plan is to bring in everything we have from when you first took ownership.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, we're gonna be adjourning in a minute, but I just wanna, I just wanna say one thing. We are gonna meet on the tenth of December, a week from tonight, at a regular, our regular board meeting in the town hall in the Callahan Room. Um, I know I had mentioned, uh, prior about meeting on the twenty-fourth of December, that won't be taking place, we'll formally, we'll formally make that announcement on the tenth, but it won't be taking place. So I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm over.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Everyone will say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I'd like to join you for pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. My name's Anthony Doyle, I'm town moderator, this is a special meeting called by the Select Board by a warrant that is dated, uh, November fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen. The warrant has been properly noticed by being posted at Dewey's Public House, Dalton Restaurant, Greenwich Variety and Convenience Store, Dalton General Store, the United States Post Office, Berkshire Organics, and the Town Hall Bulletin Board. On the stage with me tonight, we have members of the Finance Committee, we have Michael Hoffman, and we have William Droshin, we have your town clerk, Deborah Mary, town manager, Kenneth Walto, and members of the Select Board, uh, we have John Bartels, the Chair, Robert Bishop, Mark Strout, Edward Holup, and John Boyle. This meeting is being recorded, uh, please speak only one at a time. I know there's a big crowd tonight, so we're gonna try to give everybody an opportunity to be heard. First item on the agenda, Article number one, to see if the town will vote to request that its select, selected representative in the General Court file a special act with the General Court on behalf of the inhabitants of the town of Dalton as follows. An act designating a certain bridge in the town of Dalton as the Specialist Mitchell K. Dolling Memorial Bridge. Section one, the bridge number D zero-one dash zero-zero-six on Old Windsor Road in the town of Dalton shall be designated and known as the Specialist Mitchell K. Dolling Memorial Bridge in memory of Specialist Mitchell K. Dolling, United States Army, who was killed in action in Afghanistan. Section two, the Division of Highways of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation shall erect and maintain suitable markers bearing the designation in compliance with the standards of the department or to take any other action in relation thereto.
Article one, I move that the town vote to request that its elected representatives in the General Court file a special act with the General Court on behalf of the inhabitants of the town of Dalton as follows. An act designating a certain bridge in the town of Dalton as the Specialist Mitchell K. Dolling Memorial Bridge. Section one, the bridge number D dash zero-one dash zero-zero-six on Old Windsor Road in the town of Dalton shall be designated and known as the Specialist Mitchell K. Dolling Memorial Bridge in memory of Specialist Mitchell K. Dolling, United States Army, who was killed in action in Afghanistan. Section two, the Division of Highways of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation shall erect and maintain suitable markers bearing the designation in compliance with the standards of the department.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Dan Fillet, thirty-six, Chivers Drive, um, I knew Mitch. Uh, he was one of my son's best friends, and, uh, I'd like to take the time to thank the Select Board for their work on this, especially John Boyle, who I know is very , uh, intricate in it, and also, uh, Paul Mark, for the work that he and his office has done for this. I think it's a great tribute to a great kid, and I wanna, uh, just let you know that we really appreciate, uh, your taking this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of Article one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you opposed by saying no. Thank you, Madam Clerk, that passes unanimously. Article two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from available funds to be reimbursed by a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in accordance with Chapter ninety, Section thirty-four of the Massachusetts General Laws, or to take any other action in relation thereto.
I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money...
I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from available funds to be reimbursed by a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in accordance with chapter ninety, Section thirty-four of the Massachusetts general laws, or to take any other action thereto. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Moderator, the exact, the exact amount to be appropriated is forty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments, any discussion? Hearing not seen none, it's been moved and seconded. Article two, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you, passes unanimously. Mr. Droshin, you have to move to close the meeting.
I move to adjourn. I move to adjourn.
Close enough. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a great holiday.